This regular meeting of the Marshall Independent School District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present and that this meeting has been called in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I wish to give a warm welcome to everyone who is here. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the MISD Board of Trustees, we are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievements, set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions; that is the responsibility of the superintendent. This is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public. You are our guests and you are welcome to observe and listen. If you wish to address the board in the public comment portion of the agenda, please fill out the public comment form found on the back table and return the completed form to the superintendent's secretary. We are pleased that you have taken the time to join us this evening and we thank you for your interest in the Marshall Independent School District. Someone like to open us some prayer this evening, please?
I will. Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, first of all, we want to say thank you, Lord. Thank you for blessings seen and unseen. Dear Lord, as we gather in this place, please continue to shower your blessings upon each of us and prepare our hearts for the things that will be discussed this evening. Fill us with courage that we may be able to share the ideals you have placed in our hearts with those in attendance this evening. And dear heavenly Father, let everything that we do be in alignment with your word done decently and in order. Help us to remember, Lord, that our service is all about you, not us. In the precious name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen.
We will now have the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, moving along to administrative reports. Item one is the special program update, Ms. Cruz and Ms. Venable.
Good evening, y'all.
And I'm here.
So just kind of wanted to talk to y'all about what Ms. Cruz and Ms. Venable are about to talk to y'all about. About a month ago, Ms. Venable came to me and informed me that the district was wanting to turn Price-Ty Young into a fine arts academy. And I was beyond elated. Research has shown that schools who dedicate a focus to the fine arts show an average of 22.5% improvement in math competency and a 12.6 increase in reading proficiency. Students engaged in the arts have higher GPAs, lower dropout rates, and higher standardized test scores. The arts also teach 21st century skills like creativity, complex problem-solving, critical thinking, and emotional intelligence. So our plan, and Ms. Venable is going to go into much more detail than I am about it, is to focus on the fine arts, choir, band, theater, strings, and art as individual subjects as well as integration into the curriculum of the classroom. With this, we are making a promise to our future of dedication and excellence in the fine arts for years to come. I've always loved the arts at Marshall, and Marshall has such a rich history and success in supporting the fine arts. I was there for Anthony Robinson and Alexia Risers Band Days, Sarah Gooding's one-act plays, and Sandy Parks's multiple sweepstakes in choir, as many of your children were too. So the fine arts have always been a passion of mine, and I truly believe that the -- I've continued to benefit from having been a part of the fine arts at Marshall ISD, and this plan to bring it to students of Price-Ty Young and any student who wishes to apply to join our campus as a member of this fine arts academy is only going to exceed our expectations and build our future. So thank you, Ms. Venable.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Make sure my clicker's in right direction. These are some of the facts that Mr. Langley just quoted, so I'm not going to quote them again to you, but as he said, research is proven that when students have education, early education in the fine arts, that they do improve academically. This next slide talks about some of the qualitative measures of improvement, such as increased drive and improved concentration, which we know improves academic and behavioral success as well. Students who participate in the arts show sophisticated social skills, such as cooperation and sharing. They also -- it's been shown that it reduces anxiety and aggressive behaviors in students, so addressing the social-emotional needs of our students as well is academic. The purpose and proficiencies for a fine arts academy in Marshall are that just providing all students with the opportunity for a strong foundation in fine arts. This also leads to greater participation in our secondary programs, which increases student involvement in our ISD as well as in our community. Early education in the arts has shown to increase memory capacity and attention and concentration, again benefiting the student overall. Students who have in Price-Ty Young Fine Arts Academy will have multiple performance opportunities throughout the year. The older students, we will be able to select concentrations in two areas, allowing them to develop a deep proficiency in these areas that can carry on to junior high, high school, and beyond. Also, there's a cross-curricular piece where students will then have a further interest and engagement in their educational world. Something that makes this difference is something called arts integration. This is the Kennedy definition of arts integration, but simply put, inside of an arts-integrated classroom, students show proficiency in their core curriculum and in their arts curriculum. Basically, they would show understanding through an art form and thus accomplishing both the teaks for the art form and for their core curriculum. This is an example of arts integration in a second-grade science classroom.
It didn't want to go there.
And it didn't do anything. There we go.
Let me see.
Okay.
Look at that.
I'll just talk about the video. So in this classroom, this is an art teacher, but she's actually functioning inside of a science classroom. In the secondary -- in the second-grade science classroom, they're talking about the forces of flight, drag, lift, gravity, and -- I forgot the fourth one. And they also were studying Jackson Pollock. Jackson Pollock is an abstract artist who used all of the forces of flight inside of his art. So by the students experiencing, creating the art using those forces, it deepens their understanding of the forces of flight as well as the artist. In the video, you'll see the second graders, eight-year-olds, using the proper terminology in science and the proper terminology relating to Jackson Pollock, the artist.
That's good stuff.
Pretty good.
It's okay. We'll move on.
You can email it to us.
Describe it.
Describe it.
Please say the video.
As I described, with arts integration in the classroom, this is Bloom's taxonomy, which is how we determine rigor inside of the classroom. With arts integration, you're looking at the application level or above, which means that your students are getting much more rigorous education, not just a fluff curriculum. They're actually having further, deeper understanding of what they're being taught in their core classroom. How will Price-Ty Young look different? The arts integrated through the core curriculum is something that would be unique to Price-Ty Young, as well as increased performance and exhibit opportunities. The vision here is to provide those opportunities on campus, but also throughout our community at large. The program's offer would be art, music, choir, strings, theater, and dance, creating a culture of excellence through academics as well as this performance areas. Additionally, possible after-school clubs. This could be based upon student interest that we would find out through an interest survey. These could look like a guitar lessons, piano lab, a dance team, things like that that are specific interests of the students at Price-Ty Young. Current PTY students would continue to attend PTY, and incoming students that are zoned for PTY would also attend without needing to apply. All students that are already there would benefit from this deepened fine arts education. Other MISD students could complete application in an interest survey. The students will be admitted based upon availability of seats. The interest surveys are to provide the staff with interest of the students. Students do not have to have experience in the fine arts in order to attend the Fine Arts Academy. PTY bilingual students, by opening bilingual up in PTY in the 2020, 2022, 2023 school year, we provide the opportunity for bilingual students to also be enriched by this fine arts education. K-3 bilingual students zoned for PTY will attend PTY, and grades four and five will be grandfathered into William B. Travis or have the option to attend the Fine Arts Academy pending class sizes. This is a tentative rollout plan. Tonight is our board meeting, and tomorrow we'll be meeting with the staff at PTY to discuss the ins and outs of this Fine Arts Academy. There will be a tentative parent meeting on March 28th at PTY. An application window for our interest survey will be March 29th through April 19th, and we hope to have all of that data analyzed by the end of April. As I mentioned before, the application and the interest survey just provides basic student information as well as gauges their interest in fine arts of all varieties. This would help us figure out our future programming for PTY so that we're really tailoring to the students that attend there. Our PTY Fine Arts Academy goes back to this culture of completion. If we start in kindergarten through fifth grade, pushing fine arts down to a strong foundation, that student is able to build their knowledge as well as their proficiency all the way through high school. This piece of art is by my son Josiah. He was studying different forms of line as one of the kindergarten art teaks, and I'm very, very thankful that our community is providing this opportunity for all MISD students, but especially my own. So. Okay. Are there any questions?
What are we, y'all, going to do to get the word out about that?
So I have already been building a website as well as some different documents that we'll push out through social media and on our webpage to get information out about the parent night and about what the Fine Arts Academy would look like.
We're also going to do a call-out about the parent night so that everybody gets that.
I think it's great. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, good.
Is there any way we can put it on neighboring school districts' website?
Whitney, can you check under that? Let's just put a big sign up.
Just thinking outside the box.
I think you can. I don't know if you legally claim, but I think you can.
All the way to high school, learning.
There you go.
We probably do actually though need to get a big banner or something to put out here in front.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, y'all, let us know when you do that so we can retweet it and re-Facebook it and all that junk.
Yes, we should have something pushed out probably Wednesday, definitely by the end of this week, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Appreciate it.
Good, good, good.
All right. Good afternoon, evening. It's kind of in between now. Very excited about this PTY Fine Arts Academy. Bethany's done an excellent job. So I'm going to speak very briefly about the Marshall ISD Avid Elementary that we are rolling out. So we know we have Avid at the high school and at the junior high, so we love Avid and the benefits for our students. Very excited about the opportunity to push it down now to elementary. It looks different at elementary than it does at the secondary, so it's really more comprehensive across the whole campus, so I got to go over the right direction. Very quickly, just Avid is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students for college readiness and a success in a global society, career readiness as well. What is Avid Elementary? So it embeds best practices throughout the day. So instead of the students going to an Avid class like they do in secondary, it embeds those skills throughout the whole day. It's a strategy and mindset that's woven into all areas of the campus. By teaching and reinforcing the academic behaviors and higher-level thinking at a young age, Avid Elementary teachers create a ripple effect in later grades. So our students just rolling out of elementary in Avid, just roll right into it at the secondary level and have those skills with them. Sets a foundation for a successful education journey because of the skills. So the elementary components look similar to the secondary, and they have the WICOR acronym, write-to-learn, inquiry, collaborate, organization, and read-to-learn. So the organization tools, those students will have agendas and planners, note-taking strategies, the WICOR strategies, student success, communication skills, writing, speaking, listening, talking about those 21st century skills so important to our students, and partnerships among students, classrooms, grade levels, schools, families, and communities. So utilizing these skills will help our students prepare for junior high transition and on into high school. The H Elementary will have an Avid site team, much like the high school and the junior high do. It will consist of the principal, which is the principal, but they will have the site administrator who will basically be over the site team and the trainings that occur on the campus and all things Avid on that campus. They'll also have classroom teachers. The site team members serve as the advocates for Avid students, and the Avid program improvises the collegial support working to ensure the program's success. So we're going to be able to have several of our teachers trained this summer in the Avid strategies with elementary. So the principal oversees the work, but the site team administrator actually does the boots-on-the-ground work. The Summer Institute, so our teachers will be attending that virtually this summer. Participants will learn from Avid's top educators and network with colleagues. It's a three-day training. It's going to be virtual, and we're going to have them all come to the administration building to have that training. So all four campuses will be able to collaborate and discuss the strategies that they're going to and goals that they're going to work on for 22, 23 school year. So our next step is add middle school site, which we're doing that now, so rolling up to the sixth grade, and we will add elementary sites. We're going to do fourth and fifth grade for this next school year. It is a pretty big task to undertake, so we thought rolling it out chunks at a time would be better than trying to roll K-5 and rolling out a big cock nest. That monster, that elephant might be too big to eat. So 22, 23, then we'll add the elementary sites for second and third-grade teachers and push that down, and in 24, 25, K-1. So by 24, 25, we will be a K-12 Avid district.
Wonderful.
Yep. Good. Cool. Is there a budget impact for that?
Right now, we are paying for it with ESER, so the large expenses will be all paid for with ESER. Following that up will just be the registration or actually the membership fee after we have all of our teachers trained.
So that being, I guess we're using ESER III for that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it qualifies as learning loss, so.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, moving along to the item two, it's a superintendent's report.
We got Cat.
Are we doing this?
Do that now or are we going to come back?
That's later.
Oh, that's later. Okay.
So superintendent's report.
Okay, just a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to recognize our Marshall Education Foundation, which they do a phenomenal job for our school district. They most recently provided our individual teachers with 39 different grants for a total of $29,184 that was given away, and so I just wanted to make sure and give a shout-out to them because I don't know what we would do without them. They are wonderful. And also, very excited, we received news that our Marshall High School students, grades nine through 12, that were in various art classes, they competed at Region VII Visual Arts Scholastic Event, which is a UIL event. We have 22 student artworks that medaled in that event, and we have one going to state with her artwork. So we were very excited. Her name is Katia Espinoza, so we were just thrilled about that. So I wanted to make sure that y'all knew those things.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Okay, moving along to the consent, agenda, and action items. These are normal items, and we also added one item from Thursday's meeting on there.
I move that we accept them.
Accept it.
There's a motion by Ms. Marshall and a second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Matters requiring board discussion, action. First item is consider to approve the certification of unopposed candidates for the May 7, 2022 school district, school board trustee election for District 2 and 3, which is Mr. Medina and Ms. Warwick.
Well, it's showing that Mr. Lewis is the candidate.
Oh, yeah. Right, he's unopposed. That's true, that's true.
Not me!
She was unopposed. She didn't run.
So it means he gets to come sit here right now.
Not yet.
Wait till May.
I'll let you go yet, girl.
But we are glad Mr. Lewis is here.
Yes, we are. Thank you for coming.
Well, so I guess I move to accept that one, too.
Yeah, we need to accept that. Have a motion by Ms. Marshall. Second. Second by Mr. Palmer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The motion carries. Item two is consider to approve the order of cancellation for the May 7, 2022 school board trustee election for District 2 and District 3.
I move we approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Warwick and a second by Mr. Medina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Item three is to consider and approve the 2022-2023 district calendar. Ms. Cruz.
Much anticipated.
Much anticipated. We're very excited to get this on the agenda and pushed, moved on through. It's very similar to this year's calendar as far as the start and end dates of the school. Our new teachers will report on August the 1st, last day of school, May 26th, to graduation on the 19th. So the big changes will be our fall break. We were able to push that back to match our bi-week, so everybody involved in that, not just our football team, but all our other extracurriculars that go and support, will be able to enjoy fall break. And then pushing our spring break back one week, and so we are in line with ETBU as well as our other campuses in adjoining neighboring districts.
That's good.
That's great.
Questions? That one never gets off.
Those are the only two things that I heard about, both things you addressed.
That's what everybody was most excited about. I move we approve the 22-23 district calendar as presented.
Second. Have a motion by Ms. Warwick and a second by Mr. Palmer. We approve the calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The motion carries. Item four is consider to approve the termination of contract with Southeast Service Corporation, DBA SSC Service Solutions. Mr. Chilko.
Yes, ask you to consider terminating this contract with SSC, our current custodial service, which would go into effect on June 3rd of this year. We hope to bring a recommendation for a new agreement for the April board meeting, which would allow them to start after June 3rd and to continue services and not have a gap.
Right, in addition.
Yes.
I guess couldn't that get any worse in between now and then?
No. They've actually been doing a better job since we've discussed this with them.
Isn't it?
Oh, goodness gracious.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Huffine and a second by Ms. Marshall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The motion carries. Moving on to education, consider to approve the K-8 PE and health curriculum. Ms. Venable.
Early in February, me and two other coaches, I'm not a coach, two coaches from the district went to review PE and health curriculum at Region VII. After reviewing that curriculum, we found that CATCH was what we believed the best option for our students and our staff. CATCH is also qualifies as a coordinated health program, which is a -- it's required by the state. So implementing this program and having a coordinated health program would make us compliant as well as providing good, solid PE education for our students. It's very easy to access, it is easy to implement, and it's actually the cheapest option, so there's not really a wrong thing here. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you for doing this.
Yes.
Been needed.
Question?
Well, my question is, is we had talked earlier about, and this would be you, we talked about encouraging their sports at that level.
We already, you want to go talk about it?
Sure. So the good thing, Ms. -- sorry, Dr. Langley talked to me about that as well, and so that's something that we were looking for. CATCH actually has units broken apart by sport, all the way down to kindergarten, all the way to eighth grade. So even, you know, your kinder babies are getting that, but also your eighth-grade students that are taking PE that are not in athletics are still getting that solid sports curriculum.
And they actually took a trip to Gilmer to visit with them because they've been doing that for several years now. We met with Coach Alvarez last week, and there's going to be some coordination between our coaches and our PE teachers, and I think in Gilmer they call it the Buckeye.
They call it the Buckeye Maker, so we're like.
Obviously, ours should be the Maverick.
Maverick.
Where'd they get that idea? Where did they get that? So, I know, you know they did. So anyway, we're very excited about the coordination between this wonderful PE program and then also the idea of integrating our sports. One of the, just a little basic kind of thing, of course, our coaches have certain whistles that they do that the guys here or the girls hear, and they know what it means, so we'll even be teaching those kind of things down to our little ones, so they don't have to learn it when they get into pre-athletics or seventh-grade athletics.
Good. Great.
And it's equally, it's very moldable, so we're able to take this as a resource and add in our Maverick Way, not out of it.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. Do you have a motion for that?
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Fourth, Huffine. Motion. Break me off. Motion by Mr. Huffine and a second by Ms. Warwick.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The motion carries. Item two is to consider and approve district changes affecting policy EIF local graduation course requirement for incoming freshman class 2022-2023. Ms. Crick.
Okay, so currently, our students that are enrolled at Marshall High School, if they graduate on the foundation plan, they have to earn 22 credits. If they graduate with an endorsement, on the foundation plan with an endorsement, or on the distinguished with an endorsement, they have 26 credits. And looking forward to our incoming freshmen staying their senior year all day and us wanting to add that local credit course that has the financial planning, those 21st century skills, looking ahead to those students being on campus, we added, we're proposing to add one credit for our foundation plan students for that local credit, so they would go from 22 to 23, and then our students graduating on the foundation plan with an endorsement would require one local credit, which would be the senior financial planning, we call it the Maverick Way, financial planning, and one elective. So they would need 28 credits to graduate, as would our distinguished with an endorsement would require the local credit and an elective. So they should have plenty of time to get all those credits with being on campus through their senior year.
I guess my question is, is would that space take away an opportunity for dual credit or?
No, ma'am.
Any other of those courses that we're.
No, ma'am. That one course will not, and they will still have the opportunity to do dual credit as an elective.
And there's still some open spaces because, I mean, if you took up all of the credits, I mean, I think it was 32 or something, and so we had to have a gap in there in case some students fail and they need to make up some courses, and that also gives other students time to take some other ones.
Will be asked, I believe.
Any and all of them need that course.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, we're very excited about that course.
They're forcing it to their senior year.
Yes.
Now, we also have talked about making some, if a child fails that, their senior year, because we don't want that to keep them from graduating. Mr. Gr- Mr. Gregory said that we already have things in place for students who are lacking a credit or two because of failing something. Some of that is just, they do it online, they can make it up in that manner, they can have some extra seat time. And so we wanted to make sure, we wanted their senior year so it is fresh on their brain when they walk across that stage and get ready to go on to the rest of their life. But we also wanted to make sure that we were giving the kids the support that they needed. And so we'll have, start out with a rubric that tells the students, here are the things that you will need to do in this class, so that they'll have a heads-up on that and then give them the support they need to make sure that they pass that course.
Sounds good.
So we're very excited about the course.
And this will be at Meg's, too?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a motion on that?
Absolutely.
My second.
Have a motion by Ms. Marshall, a second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Item three is consider and approve district changes affecting policy EIC local weighted grade scale for incoming freshmen 2022, 2023.
Okay, so again, this will, our students that are currently enrolled at Marshall High School will graduate, kind of like when you're in college, you graduate under the catalog you start under. Same thing with our students currently enrolled. This is effective for our incoming freshmen of 2022, 23. We were just looking at our grade point, our weighted scale, and how our grade points are distributed for our students and making things more equitable across the, the grade point weights. So AP courses with a test and our MavU courses will be eligible for a higher grade point average. You see that column? And the stress on that is with the test.
Go to page 179, that's the new one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The other one is the one for the kids who have already in high school. So the one on page 179 is the new one.
Okay, got you.
Sorry.
Okay, I don't, I don't see y'all.
I know.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. All right, so AP courses with the test and the MavU courses will receive the highest weighted points. You'll see that. And then looking at our MavTech, which are students that attend TSTC, and our Panola College, and if we happen to have any other accredited dual-credit courses that a student could be taken, those will receive the next highest weight. AP courses without the test and pre-AP courses then receive the next weight, and then our other courses will fall under the last column.
That's basically your regular course.
Right.
Yes, sir, our regular courses.
Playing that from the ground. So. I like that. You don't have to necessarily pass the test, you just have to take the test.
You have to take the test. Well, and, and the reason is, when they calculate grade point averages, they do not have those AP test scores back.
To be honest, we wanted it to be that.
Yes, that's where it started.
But then we realized it would be summertime before we had those.
Yeah, so this was just pushing them more to take the test, and I imagine many of them will pass the test. So, but we couldn't put that in there that they had to pass it.
And it was that of kids taking the test so we'll know the effectiveness of our instruction.
Yes, we get more to do that.
That's a big piece we're missing.
Yeah, I really felt that if you've got a student who is taking, making the effort to take the test and another one who isn't, to me, the one that's making that effort should get a higher GPA for that same grade, so.
That's a designer of the program anyway.
Right, right. Questions?
No, that's good, thank you. Do you have a motion for that? Make a motion, we approve. Second. Motion by Mr. Palmer, a second by Mr. Huffines. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Moving on to finance, consider and approve an amended inter-local participation agreement.
This inter-local agreement will just allow us to continue to participate in the self-funded risk management pool. They redo this about every 10 years, so this is just the, the standard update on this inter-local agreement.
Okay. We approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Huffines, a second by Ms. Marshall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, with that, we will adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Chapter 551-074 and 551-071.